Very good, we come now to item number nine. The Officer and his National Blade Beach. We have two objectors, Martin Lucas Smith and Dr Neil. You have three minutes between you. Mr Grimbley, John Grimbley is the agent, where is John Grimbley? John, would you join us at the table, there's a seat there for you. And councillor Robertson is the Ward Councillor and is entitled to speak after the public speakers. So then we go to Nigel Blade Beach who will set out the report for us.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to start by confirming that this is an application for lawful development for general educational use. It is not an application for planning permission and cannot result in granting of any planning permission. Importantly therefore, the planning merits of the proposal cannot be taken into account. If members are mine in the grant certificate, it would confirm that were the building to have been used for general educational purposes on the date the application was submitted, since 28th of July 2017, that use would be lawful. The application should be assessed only in relation to what would have been lawful on this date. This is not an unusual type of application, but it is unusual that it should be considered by the planning committee, since it relies on technical assessment rather than more usual consideration of planning merits. The application has been referred to the committee by councillor Robertson. Due to its contentious nature and the long planning history of the site, members will recall deferring a planning application for change of use from dance school studio to general education at the July 2017 committee. One of the reasons for the deferral was to establish whether the 2014 planning permission for dance school studio use had been lawfully implemented. That is not the subject of this application, but does form part of the consideration of it as set out in the report. Members will have read the report and the arguments contained therein. Essentially, the assessment of lawfulness follows the arguments submitted by the applicants, and these centre around two key questions: whether the 2014 permission has been lawfully implemented, and whether the dance school studio use has been materially established use. Sticking to both of these, the members will note from the report the need for all pre- commencement conditions to be discharged and for the use to have begun. As stated in the report, all such conditions have been formally discharged by the council in full, and there is clear evidence that the use has begun. These are matters of fact, and I would advise members that the permission has been lawfully implemented and there is little discretion in this regard. The second key question is whether the dance school studio use has been materially established, that is, in more than a minimal use of premises. The applicant seeks to rely upon planning law that allows changes of use within use classes, in this case Class D1, without the need for a further application for planning permission. They need therefore to show that the dance school studio use had been materially established by the 28th of July 2017. I note the assessments of the evidence undertaken by third parties which conclude that the material use has not taken place. The assessments are thorough and detailed, however, in my opinion, they broadly consider the threshold for proof to be higher than that which is legally required. There is no legal requirement for the applicant to demonstrate the material use beyond reasonable doubt, and neither should the council seek to establish this. My advice to members is to consider the evidence in its entirety and determine whether it is more likely than not that a material use of the building as a dance school studio existed at the date of the application, namely 28th of July. By way of guidance, members may consider if the use has operated in a reasonable proportion of the building and for a reasonable length of time, continuing at the date of the application. My advice is that members consider the substance of the evidence and should avoid challenging its veracity. Any submission of false or misleading evidence as part of the application is a criminal offence and grounds for revocation of any certificate granted. In summary, a technical assessment of the application is required, the planning merits cannot be taken into account. The pre-commencement conditions of the 2014 permission have all been discharged in full, and the dance use has begun, so there is little discretion in considering if the use has been lawfully implemented. The dance use needs to have been material use as of 28th of July, and members should consider if the evidence indicates it is more likely than not that a material dance use has taken place. For the reasons given in the report, I recommend that a lawful development certificate for the proposed general education use should be granted.
Thank you very much indeed. Martin Lucas and Dr Neil, in general, thank you.
Okay, the battle for the Harrow Mallot has been a long saga, and the officer asserts that everything has been lawfully implemented. But has it? Has it really? The officer and the barrister agreed at the top of page 196 that 10% use of the floor space is the minimum required to demonstrate material use. Government guidance on certificates of lawfulness require decision making to be on a balance of probability, and they have to have evidence that is precise, sufficient and unambiguous. But, zero CSBPA timetable data was provided in any form from any source for any date between the 31st of March and the 28th of July. Is it output for the only precise evidence to cover four days during the entire 18-week pertinent period? No. In calculating its dance use, CSBPA included every square inch of space, but ignored most of the weekly hours approved under planning, despite those hours appearing in their schedules. Credible CSBPA dance use during those four days was only 3% of the true floor space. Is that sufficient evidence for material use? No. The two long key witness statements add no clarity about use. The two student statements are weirdly stilted, bizarrely similar, and entirely vague. Neither dance teacher ever mentions either the building or any classes after the 30th of March. Is any of this unambiguous supporting evidence? No. And that's all the evidence that there is. In the battle over the Harrow Mallot, the community trusts that the fair and independent minds of the planning committee are mightier than this utterly inadequate evidence.
At a fundamental level, it's the principle that if something has been built that is not according to approved plans, then it does not implement a consent. The 2014 consent has not been implemented. Two elements, the paths and the air conditioning expansion, have not been built according to the plans. A section 73 application refused them, and you've agreed enforcement action. It cannot therefore, by definition, at all be in place. 1997 logically remains the operative consent. Thus, the only change which would permit a dance school is not in place. That should be the end of the story. If you don't accept this fundamental point of principle, I'll move on to two further issues. In this case, the use is directly related to the building changes. They cannot be separated. You can't run a dance school with only this small amount of air conditioning. Logically, they build more because it enables the use they want. In other words, the scale of the unapproved air conditioning directly facilitates dance use. Lastly, condition six about noise has been signed off, as the officer said, but it relates to the new air conditioning design which you have refused. So how is it logical then to suggest that all the conditions are in place? Therefore, you should defer, or preferably refuse, the application until you know the outcome of the section 73 appeal, because only that will establish whether the application, which includes the dance use change, is in place at all. Thank you.
Councillor Robertson?
Thank you. Now, this is a complicated case, but it states us some very important issues of planning law and for the local community. It's vital that the committee recognise what is at stake for the local community, and that is the change of use of a building to general education, and the loss of the community of a building to provide dance classes for local people. Much of this depends on whether the current planning permission is still the 1997 decision or that in 2014. And as you've just heard, the argument is that it's still the 1997 position. In September 2016, the applicant provided a legal opinion they had received from Simon Bird QC, and that's in your reports back at page 252 onwards. In paragraph 20, he says that pre-commencement conditions need to be met, and use would have to be made for premises as a dance studio. The point is that only once these have both been occurred, is it possible for the change of use to another D1 use to go ahead without the need for planning permission. The government's process laid down for lawful developments to get certification states that the evidence must be sufficiently precise and unambiguous to justify the grant of a certificate on the balance of probability. It also states that without it, the planning authority may be justified in refusing a certificate. So what we need is evidence that it's precise and unambiguous. The detailed representations analyse the evidence which has been put forward by the applicant, and you've just heard the statements from those representation. It's clear that the conditions have not been met, and the evidence is not at all precise and unambiguous. If this matter goes to judicial review or appeal, these analyses will back up the opinion. The applicant has not shown that the use of the premises as a dance school or studio was material, and has not been put to any other use. The QC's legal opinion in paragraph 25 on page 162 states that planning use would... to change planning use, that use would have to be a material first use judged as a matter of fact and degree, which, as a very general rule of thumb, would be no less than 10% of the floor space, and provided that there is no other use fatal premises. The QC also reports that he understood that the initial use of the building would be some 30 to 40% as dance studios, and as a matter of fact and degree, that would, in his view, be sufficient to implement the change of use. So what he's saying is that 30 or 40% might be material, but he would accept down to 10%, but not less than 10%. And no evidence has been produced that the 10% of the building has been put to the use that it should be put to, for this certificate to be applied and to be allowed. So it's vital to assess whether the first use of the building was material as a dance school studio and not used for any other purpose. On the amendments sheet, the planning officer quotes from the QC's advice, and while recognising that use has to be made to be material, believes that 10% does not have to be demonstrated. While earlier in his report, he said it has to, and he accepted that 10% was a limit. And now he's saying it doesn't need to be proved, but this is just not valid. You've got to have part of it both ways. The planning officer has also stated that the committee should review the inadequacy of the use which has been demonstrated by Dr Neil, and accept that no material and exclusive use of the dance school and studio during the crucial first use of the building took place. The applicant has stated that in 20th of February this year, CSBPA, that's the dance school, commenced their dance... it's the performing rights school, sorry. Commenced dance school and studio use of the building. They produced timetables which showed scheduled classes, some of which are unbelievably long. They included a ballet class lasting three hours, but that just wouldn't happen. The CSBPA website shows that only one person qualified to teach dance on the staff, P. M. Crockett, which means that much of the time, the students in the building were participating in other forms of activity, possibly visual arts but not dance. The timetable provided includes musical theatre, that is not dance, and devised movement which only peripherally includes elements of dance. But the QC states that there must be no other use during this initial use for it to be lawful. Of the 179 hours per week shown in the timetables, only 14 is dance. That's under 8%. That falls below the level the QC regards as absolute minimum change of use to be allowed. These timetables are from early days of occupation of the building, but there is no evidence that these timetables were adhered to. No statistics are provided with numbers of students. At one point, they showed only one qualified dance teacher in two places at once, and above all, they do not show exclusive use of the dance school. The applicant has an unfortunate history of cutting corners, building other than to the approved plans, making up stories with regard to features such as the reason for paths on the east side of the building. Personally, I had to cut off communication with them last year when they started misrepresenting what I had said. Good credible evidence needs to have been provided, otherwise it must be concluded that the risk to the community is too great to allow this application. The importance of all this is that the loss of facilities for the local community is at stake. To sum up, no certificate of lawfulness can be issued relating to decision under the application, 14/1052. Although that application is being dealt with today, it is being relied on, as the officer has expressed. Use of the building with the material with the exclusive nature for dance has not been proved. The legal position is therefore that the building remains subject to the 1997 permission, and the proposed certificate of lawfulness must be refused. What is it that it states? There's important issues of planning law and the effects on the local community. Change of use of the building into general educational purposes, and the loss of the community of a building to provide dance classes for local people. I urge you to turn this application down. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. John Grimbley?
Thank you Chair. If I can...
Is this a point of order?
It is.
Yes.
I may be incorrect, but the process of speaking... the order of speakers is actually is not in accordance with our... the way we do things, because it should be objected to the officer...
Yes, you're quite right. I should have... Shall we get on with it then?
No, because surely that's... we must point out to the Ward Councillor that as a result of following on from the other speaker, if the Ward Councillor would like to then come back and add other comments in... because you have... my point is, the Ward Councillor has listened to the objector, has not had the opportunity to listen to the proposer, therefore... but the proposer has the opportunity to listen to the Ward Councillor.
If I didn't call upon John Grimbley. John, would you make your remarks?
Sorry Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I do have to agree with councillor Park, because the Ward Councillor should have heard both all the speakers. So I think that the Ward Councillor should have an opportunity to judge, say if he wants to add anything.
I was going to say that, yes. So we're here now. This is all down to my bad chairmanship. You are entitled to three minutes, but do be warned that you will be followed, if he so chooses, by the Ward Councillor, who will comment on anything you have said.
Thank you Chair. Can I say in response to what I've heard, that the key question of the certificate is whether the use of the building was validly implemented by 28th of July 2017 as a dance school of the year. Now, it's as a dance school studio. Now, that includes dance lessons, but it also includes warm-ups, extensive rehearsals, changing, taking refreshments and so forth. The pupils as extensive in the evidence are there from 9 to 5. It's a dance school, and to focus purely on the dance lessons would be totally incorrect. In determining whether the use has been validly implemented, there are only two underlying legal questions. Had all the pre-commencement conditions been complied with, and had the dance school use been implemented by 28th of July? As the officer's report emphasises, only conditions that require something to be done before developing premises and that relate to the use are relevant. Ongoing compliance conditions are not relevant, and that is a long-established natural law as determined by Simon Bird QC in 1918, October 2017. Therefore, the submissions from local residents regarding car park gates, plant, etc., related to works, are not relevant, and I would strongly urge the committee to resist the objector's attempt to confuse the issue, and this would certainly lead the committee into a legal error. The planning officer's report confirms that all the pre-commencement conditions have been satisfied, and this is a matter of public record. Accordingly, subject to finding the use for dance purposes has been implemented as a matter of fact, the implementation of the use was valid. On the second question, the correct standard of proof is dance probabilities and not reasonable doubts. I must also emphasise again that the law requires that you decide whether the use had been validly implemented at the time of the application and not at a time afterwards. I say this particularly in light of the submissions from the objector of 24th October about the current use being expanded beyond dance. The managing director made it clear in his witness statement of 24th July, at paragraph 22, that whilst the premises had been used for nothing but dance until then, it was the school's intention to use the premises for delivery purposes beyond just dance after that time. Having taken legal advice that broadening the use beyond the 28th of July was lawful because the use had been implemented, the school started to introduce non-dance forces from early September 2017. The representation about the subsequent broadening of usage therefore be ignored. In considering whether the dance use was implemented by 28th of July, I still remind you of the substantial evidence in the form of witness statements. They are not limited purely to the converted mark. There are photographs, for example, from May, April and May, and later in the package. And I also understand that members have visited the committee to view premises themselves. This way to first-hand erect evidence is in stark contrast to the unsubstantiated vague assertions from a small number of objectors who have not been on the premises to assess what's been going on. And the committee would need to believe that the applicant's evidence is an elaborate and extensive fabrication or lie in order to reject it. Therefore, given the clear weight of evidence, we would urge the committee to grant the application. And one final brief point is that the point is made in the objection that at some point that the use ceased over the summer. Well, that is a common factor of all schools. They don't cease to be schools because they have vacations, and a football stadium doesn't cease to be a football stadium because it's the off-season. Thank you very much.
Councillor Robertson, do you wish to comment on anything which you just mentioned?
Yes, I will briefly. It's not asserted that the... we're not relying... the evidence that's been presented by the representatives, does it not rely on the building's use after 28th of July, before the 28th of July we're talking about? Before that time, it was used for other purposes other than dance. It's on their schedule of activities, these curriculums, shows that there were other activities going on in the building. So you can't rely on that one at all, I'm afraid. The photos of people taken before the 28th of July, yes, they are accepted as being evidence of people being in the building, but they're not actually necessarily doing any dance. If you look at those photos, in many cases, they're not dancing. They're standing around or sitting on things. They're not actually dancing. In the analysis of the amount of time spent according to the curriculum on timetable classes, the warm-up time is accepted as part of the dance preparation, and it's still picked below the 10% rule. The QC would prefer to see 30 or 40% of use of the building to be material, but he accepts down to 10 as a very minimum. That has not been met. To call it fabricated evidence is a slur on the local community. There are people who have witnessed the fact that the building has been empty for large chunks of time, not just during the summer, when actually you would expect a summer school to be in there. I just think, basically, the evidence is ambiguous, and it should... it must not be ambiguous for this to be agreed. The evidence is material... it needs to be able to show material use of the building as a dance school prior to the 28th of July, and it wasn't. So the state of the community here of accepting or granting a certificate would be detrimental in the extreme. I ask you to turn the application down.
Very good. All right, thank you so much. So those are the public comments. It's now open to members. Oh, do you want to speak, Rowacken?
Not unless there...
No, not unless there...
Not unless there's...
Okay, I want... someone's indicated you might wish to. You don't wish to? Right. Councillor Small?
Yeah, so, let's see, I'll try to start. So, on the evidence, can the officer say whether there's... referring to sort of points made in the lawful development certificates of information from the government online, does the officer consider there is any useful applicant evidence presented? I know that you don't necessarily have to investigate that evidence, even if there's no evidence at all, you don't have to just take what the applicant says as truth. And on that, and on the previously used word 'law', I understand that if the applicant makes a submission that's maliciously incorrect, that's subject to a criminal offence and two years imprisonment. So I think the applicant needs to be careful what they say when it comes to that. Going forward, is the... has the evidence from the objector been shared with City Life before today? Or in any way has the evidence that there is been shared with City Life? Simon Bird QC talks about the change of use, but I understand that the way... I mean, and I've not done any of these before, it's amusing me, but I've read through the stuff, and as I understand it, the applicant has the right to use that building for this use class that they're applying to use for anyway, so even if they can't get the lawful certificate, they can still do it anyway. I think I'll have to come back a minute, I can read my own writing a minute. Sorry Chair.
I just like the point about the principle of established use, whether it has, or whether it hasn't. I don't think it's enough to say that there are doubts. I don't think it's enough to say it's ambiguous. I think the onus is really upon the objectors to the granting of the lawful certificate to demonstrate unequivocally that there has been an abuse of the permission. And if that can't be demonstrated, then we are, I think, required to accept that there isn't sufficient doubt for us to undertake a refusal. That is the position as I understand it. I'm looking around to see whether the officers will confirm that that is the position.
Chair, I wouldn't disagree with what you say. I think that what has to be demonstrated by the applicant is that there is a use which is above a minimal use, which is in accordance with the permission and is therefore lawful. And we, or you, I should say, as a committee, would not go behind that evidence unless you've had specific reasons to doubt the adequacy of the evidence that was produced to you.
So I'm really going to ask if members will confine themselves now to contributions in which they demonstrate a clear abuse of the... where they can demonstrate that the established use has not occurred. And that, you know, that is... that has got to be the deciding factor. Councillor Blenker?
Thank you Chair. There is still a fundamental question which is relevant, which was left hanging at the end of previous application and a refusal of a previous application based on air conditioning units and the path. And the reason I have to repeat that was raised by one of the objectors in their two-minute contribution. But there's an issue here of, yes, Mr Blenker accepts that conditions have been discharged on the previous application, but there's also a fundamental question of whether all the drawings and design of that previous proposal have been met as well. And that has not been addressed within this report, and it possibly should have been, but that's high and tight. But there is still a fundamental question, and this is a legal question. I'm not a lawyer, I'm just a layperson. But to me, if you've refused a application on which subsequent application, either this or other, follows on the basis of not meeting the drawings of it and the design therefore of it, until that is resolved, I'm not sure how you can say a application has been fully implemented, even if the conditions associated with it have been discharged, because there was an issue of drawings and the planning to go with that application. I'll leave that for perhaps someone to follow over and respond to. In terms of what's before us, our time... In terms of what's before us, I'll stick to what's before us. We've had, some of us have had a quick look at, not a quick look, but a proper look at what lawful certificates are about in planning terms, because we don't normally get these at planning committees, it's important for us to know what's involved. And I accept what Mr Blaisby was saying about the interpretation, it's about fact and degree and whether we accept that the evidence justifies the grant of the certificate or not. There's an area between sort of distrusting evidence provided and finding the evidence provided being unconvincing. I am in a position where I've read several times through the evidence, and as far as I'm aware, this is the only evidence that has been submitted within the report and on public file, can't see there's anything else that's been submitted, and that's all we can take into account. Having read through the various documents, the sort of statements from students and staff and the timetables, I am still not convinced that they have met the requirement for this certificate to be granted as a matter of fact and degree. And therefore, I can't, as it comes to committee, agree with it being granted. And I'll try to expand on that. In terms of the timetables, for example, there's no information within this pack on the timetables after the 30th of March. That's not covering the 80-week period that has been the subject of this certificate application, and it's far below what I would have anticipated as being submitted in terms of the period in question. And in terms of what is provided, again, if you read it closely and look at the timetable, if you've got X, Y, I's to look at the timetable, it's still, I'm convinced, in terms of how they could actually evidence the meeting of a, well, the table said bigger, it's a figure that's sort of quoted, but actually of a reasonable figure to justify the lawfulness certificate. In terms of the timetable, it only refers to the hours, for one thing, during the, you know, the school hours, as it were, whereas the actual permission relates to the whole day, weekends, in terms of the school hours and the community hours which were envisaged as part of that application. So actually, you need to near or less double the number of hours on which you base your evidence and assumptions, which though there's mention of sync crew and the fear to doubly using it for duty hours, if you accept that they can be used as evidence, then clearly the rest of the days of the week in terms of duty hours should be taken into account as well, and they're clearly not. So that, I think it's falling down on that. And as I say, in the end, we are asked as a judgment on this certificate application as to whether we have sufficient information, and it's precise enough and ambiguous enough, and on balance of probability to grant it. I've read this, I know clearly Mr Blaisby talks about, on page 296, on balance, I consider the evidence indicates to my satisfaction that the use commenced and that the certificate is merited. Well, for me, having read this through, I take a different view, in my judgment, it is not sufficient and unbalanced, I don't think that test has been met. And though it's not particularly relevant in terms of the evidence approach, I go past this building at least twice a day into town because I then avoid the subway roundabout, and just from a visual knowledge of the activity levels on this site, I have not seen a busy day that I would anticipate a proper use of this building to undergo. There is very sporadic use for my observations, that's just an observation, but it's clearly the same observation that lots of members of the community have made in their presentations as well. So I think there's an element of doubt in the actual people who observe this site on a regular basis and their view of it. But even if you just stick to the evidence, I think it falls far short of what is required, therefore, I don't think it should be granted.
As far as I understand it, certificates of lawfulness can be issued to confirm that planning enforcement action would not be possible in respect of some existing or proposed use or development. Once an application is made to the local planning authority, the council's planning committee or officers must seek legal advice to determine whether enforcement against the development described would be possible, and if not, must issue a certificate describing the development as lawful. I still am waiting to hear on what grounds people are prepared to argue that this is unlawful, that the, it seems to me not enough to be unconvinced, you've got to be convinced of falsehood. And I don't think that has been demonstrated. So shall we go on to the next person who wishes to speak? Commissioner Nezic?
I do accept, I agree with you, Chair. I think that we have received very clear legal advice in this, that the evidence that has been issued won't be enough for this certificate lawfulness to be granted, and that it is extremely unusual to this committee. It seems to me that the evidence that's provided is perfectly reasonable for dance studio use, and there have been a number of accusations made about some of the evidence that we heard, but there have certainly been some very surprising claims from the objectors about things to do with dance studios, which I don't think are supportable. I would say that the evidence that this has been used for dance studios is perfectly sufficient to bar this certificate, but we should go back to that.
I'd also like to remind members that if we decline to grant this certificate, the applicant is perfectly entitled to go to appeal. And one of the factors that will play largely at that appeal is the very clear guidance that our officers and legal experts have given us. And if we are suspected of having overthrown or disregarded or not given sufficient consideration to that advice, this authority will be penalized. Commissioner Saris?
It's really a question for the officer to make our answers on before I vote. I'm satisfied that we have enough evidence before us, that up to the 30th of March, the criteria will be met. Is he, is his position, is it reasonable for us to infer on the basis of that, that those criteria were still being met at the crucial July date? Is that his position?
That's one question. Thank you. Commissioner Smart?
Thank you, Chair. So remember my other couple of things, one of the things you just referred to there, so what's the outcome of this decision if we decide to go against the officer's recommendation? And further from what you said, Chair, I just tried to, you know, to have clarification that this decision, that this planning committee will be similar to any other planning committee decision in terms of the appeal process and all of that, that can then follow, I presume is the same. And the second thing I wanted to know about was, firstly, if you're to the officer, but also a legal officer, was what is the status of the evidence provided by the objector? So, you know, we've got a lot of evidence provided by the objector. How should we consider that in light of the evidence, if there is any, of any consequence from the applicant, and how you consider that in terms of, I know that if you're to the latter, our proposition is that you take whatever the applicant says as being the case unless you choose to look into it, which we don't normally do. So there's a kind of quandary then, I suppose, between a rottener or a lace or a spigot or a legal officer, under, you know, in plan law or even in common law, what's the situation? We've got a lot of evidence from an objector which appears to be quite robust, and then we have some evidence which isn't, hasn't been proved by our officer from the applicant, and they both say different things. So where are we, where are we to go with that? How are we to reach a decision?
Well, I think we're going to ask now Rebecca Williams, who's our legal officer, if she will say a few words, and then we'll go back to Nigel, and he will respond to the discussion so far. But with respect to the question of what follows from a refusal, enforcement follows, and you would have to provide good grounds for enforcement. What would you be enforcing? Thank you. Rebecca?
Thank you, Chair. I think that Commissioner Smart's questions, to some extent, raise the difficulty that's presented by this sort of application coming to committee. I mean, it's come, you know, for various good reasons, I'm sure, but it is difficult to fit into the usual type of debate that members are used to undertaking. And so there are usually some representations, and so the relationship between the evidence that's presented by the applicant and objectors isn't usually a sort of balancing act in the way that is done with other types of applications. In relation to how you should treat that evidence that has been put forward by objectors, essentially, insofar as that evidence discredits or undermines the evidence that the applicant has put forward, I think you have to come to a view yourselves on whether the evidence that supports the application is adequate in the light of what you've heard on both sides, and that is in a sense of balancing act. What you have to bear in mind is something that Chair related to, mentioned earlier, which is that it is, if evidence in a material particular is false and that comes to light after the certificate is granted, because quite often you don't have any evidence on the other side, the local planning authority may revoke a certificate that's granted. So that is always a possibility if something comes to light afterwards. There is also, as previously mentioned, the potential, if the situation is serious enough for a defence, to be committed and for prosecution to take place. But the first step might be that if there have been false representations made to retain a certificate, then that's a legitimate substantive argument. But I would urge you to, I would urge you to consider carefully what reasons you might have for thinking the evidence was inadequate that has been given to you in support of it. Because if there were to be a refusal, you would need to have reasons to explain why you have thought the evidence in support was inadequate.
Commissioner Hart, did you want to go?
I do.
Yes, please.
Okay, I've started listening to everything, and I've read everything twice. Now, on page 182, it clearly states, point 2.3, that the application has to do with seeking to establish that a general education use of the building is lawful if it were to have begun on the 28th of July 2017, the application submission date, okay? So in my mind, okay, I'm looking for evidence that, for the 28th of July 2017. That's correct, yes? I've reread all this evidence, I've read it twice at home, and I've gone through it again today, I've listened to the all sides, and I cannot find any evidence at all for that date. I can find lots before, lots of nice pictures before, and one close to the day before, but actually, nothing on that date.
Right.
So, and that's my point, and I just...
Is that your point?
That's my point, yes.
Nigel?
Thank you, Chair. I would just answer that point. Paragraph 2.3, what I'd be saying is, it's the proposed use, were the proposed use for general education to start on that date, it would be lawful, that's the thing, yes. So that isn't relating to any of the existing dance use, that's about the proposed use, and that's what the application is for. Thank you.
Right. I think we have come to a point now where...
I would say that, if I should respond to my points...
Right.
Which are? You've noted them after.
Nigel, please.
Thank you, Chair. You asked about whether the evidence had been shared, the evidence that's been submitted by the authorities has been uploaded to our system, so in that respect, they would have seen that. I think there's been some discussion about the air-conditioning units and how can this possibly be lawfully implemented while those matters are still, you know, deemed unlawful. I would just draw your attention to the tests, which are that the pre-commencement conditions are fully discharged. It may be that there are other matters in terms of compliance that are not in accordance with the permission, but it's a matter of, has the lawful, has the permission been lawfully implemented? And the test there is whether the pre-commencement conditions have been discharged. And there was some question about whether one of those should have been discharged, but the point is they have been discharged, so it's a factual point. Those conditions have all been discharged, and the use has commenced, therefore, it has been lawfully implemented. There were some questions about the 10%. The 10% is stated in Commissioner's advice, but he says, as a very general rule of thumb, would be no less than 10%, so it's not prescriptive, it's just an indicator that it cannot be an absolute minimal use of the building. So I think Commissioner Blinker said you've never seen a busy day, I don't think that's the test. The test is, has there been a use which is more than a minimal use? And in my opinion, the evidence does indicate that. In Commissioner's advice, paragraph 25, he also highlights another test which members could consider, and that's a hypothetical situation where there is no consent and the use is unauthorized. Based on the body of evidence, would there be enough there for the council to take enforcement action? I firmly believe there's enough evidence there, while we're sitting here looking at potential enforcement against unauthorized dance use. So again, that's another way you could consider the amount of evidence. There was a specific question about the February to March period, and whether that's sufficient. I mean, I've advised to look at the evidence as a whole, but I've also said in the report that I don't believe the use was lawfully implemented until the 23rd of March, which was the date, the final, one of those pre-commencement conditions was fully discharged. So the evidence submitted for the use between February and March, in that regard, I would attach some weight to it, but essentially, I think you're looking mostly at April, May, June, July, and I think that the evidence there shows from student accounts, from theatre companies, and all of the photographs, really indicate that more than a minimal use has gone on in the building. I hope that answers all of this.
Sorry. So, Chair, I just wanted to make one very technical point to clarify, Commissioner Blinker's point about the recent part, which is to say that, I agree with the officer, that it's not a pre-commencement issue, doesn't go to implementation, but just as a technical point, I understand that the enforcement action against that has been appealed against, and that actually suspends the enforcement action, so it's not, basically.
Commissioner Blinker?
Yeah, I need to ask Rebecca a question, because clearly, honestly, I'm convinced. My understanding, having only, obviously, as a layperson read the sort of law guidance on the certificate applications, is that the council and we as a committee have come to us, are being asked to make a decision based on the balance of probability and using the evidence before us on the basis that we have to be convinced that it is precise and sufficient and ambiguous. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, that is the test.
Therefore, if I don't believe it is sufficient, precise, or unambiguous, then I am entitled to vote against. Would that be correct? I mean, this idea, this idea that somehow by voting against this application, we are fundamentally, you know, calling an applicant a liar, I don't hold of that. If they present evidence that I'm convinced by, that's fine. If they don't, then I don't think I'm obliged to grant it.
I could just respond to that. That is correct, but I think Commissioner Blinker and other members need to remember that the threshold is comparatively low for these kind of applications. It is only whether it is more likely than not, which is the balance of probability test, and I think some of the evidence which has been presented on the other hand side has assumed that a much higher level has to be satisfied, and it is comparatively low.
Sorry, no, I, no, sorry, touch it. I'll come back to the evidence about the timetables. We have one week's worth of timetables in an 18-week period. I'm sorry, I don't find that sufficient.
I think you have made the point-
No, no, it's a important point, Chair, because I'm going to justify why I'm going to vote. The second, the second point is, in terms of the evidence, it should have been based on the total number of hours potentially available for the use of the dance school studio, which is not just the daytime, it is daytime and evening. There are 13 studios within this development, which is a lot of studio hour, studio time over an 18-week period, that is an awful lot of hours of use of individual studios. Yes, you talk about a low bar, but I'm not even convinced if we set a low bar, it is being met.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify one point that Councilor Blenker made. He said that the evidence needs to be precise and sufficient. Actually, what the legislation says is it should be sufficiently precise and unambiguous. So it's a small point perhaps, but it's not about the evidence being sufficient, it's about it being precise and unambiguous. And in that regard, I certainly consider the evidence is precise and unambiguous.
We're now going to proceed to a vote. The officer recommendation is that we should issue this certificate of lawfulness under section 192, and those in favor of the issuing of this life, of this commission, please, certificate of lawfulness, please indicate.
Five, Chair.
Those against?
Three.
Three. So it is granted. We vote now to item 10, motion to stay.